Caffeine.
Doesn't taste as good, though.
I'm used to it now.
None of it tastes good.
I wish I could adopt that philosophy.
I have never liked Mountain Dew. Can't do it.
Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight, this afternoon's school board meeting, April 20th of 2020. Mrs. Sininger, could you please do roll call?
Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mrs. Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Thank you. We have two items this evening that necessitate the need for us to withdraw into executive session. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, as well as to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a student. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
This is Delaney. Mrs. Sininger, please roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved. We will be returning from executive session at 7:00 PM to conduct our regular business meeting.
Okay, I think we're live. Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mrs. Delaney.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
Now that we're out of executive session, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. For which this stands. One nation. Under God.
God.
Indivisible. With liberty. And justice. For all.
For all.
Thank you. All right. The Superintendent has given recommendation to amend certain board policies to temporarily allow board member participation in meetings being held via electronic or telephonic means. She also has recommended temporarily suspending public comment in these meetings. This recommendation is to allow us to conduct essential business while complying with the Governor's mandated social distancing orders. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution temporarily allowing these non-traditional meetings to occur and to suspend public comment in these meetings?
I'm going to move.
Mr. Rudy, and do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schaaf, discussion. Hearing done. Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to approval of minutes.
Yes, in your packet you have the minutes from the regular board meeting from March 9, 2020. I respectfully request that you approve the minutes as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the Treasurer. Do we have a motion?
Roll call. Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Do we have a second? A second.
Second.
Mr. Chumley.
Mr. Chumley.
Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
I'm staying.
Moving on to Treasurer's Business. Mrs. Sininger.
Yes, we have two donations on the agenda tonight. First is the Amelia Walmart donated 13 pairs of shoes to Holly Hill Elementary for our children in need at that elementary. And we have an anonymous donation of $100 to help cover the cost, or actually does cover the cost of lighting the football stadium. Last Friday night, the stadium was lit up in honor of our West Claremont students as a symbol of hope and assurance that they're on our hearts and they're on our minds and that there are brighter days ahead. I respectfully request that you approve the donations as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the Treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Delaney and seconded by Mr. Schaaf, discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to the Treasurer's Business.
Yes, the first, the next action of item of business is the February financial statements. I have both February and March financial statements to present tonight. For the month of February, our total revenues were $23.4 million, which was primarily from the general fund of $18.1 million. I do want to point out that during the month of February, we received our second property tax advance on our spring settlement. And that was about $18.2 million. I also wanted to point out that within that property tax advance settlement, we took care of the $628,000, that is our annual set aside for our classroom facilities maintenance fund that is required by the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. So you won't see that end of the year transfer. Instead, we went ahead and just deposited the funds right into the fund so that that transfer isn't necessary. We also received our last payment of student wellness and success funding. So that funding was $613,216 is our total student wellness and success funding for state fiscal year 2020. In addition to that, on the expenditure side, for the month of February, our total expenditures for all funds were $9.6 million and primarily the general fund, which was $6.8 million. In terms of other large expenditures, our total OFCC expenditures for the month were $1.554,000. And our total state and federal grant expenditures were $401,000. If we were to take it to the next page of the financial statements and look just at the general fund in our five-year forecast. For the month of February, our total revenues were $18.1 million. And the majority of that was that property tax advance of $15.3 million. That brought our total revenues to date $59.7 million, which is 77% of what we had budgeted for the year. In terms of our expenditures, we spent $6.8 million in the general fund, bringing our total expenditures to date to $53.2 million. And that is 66% of our total budgeted expenditures for the year. Our total encumbrances as of June, as of February 29th were $4.7 million, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of $16.1 million in the general fund. And that does appear to be a healthy balance, and that is because we received that that large advance in the month of February. So we will start spending those funds down in the upcoming months. And finally, on the last page, we take our total expenditures of $53.2 million and break those down by function as well as the encumbrances. And you can see that total to date in the general fund between expenditures plus encumbrances. That puts us at 69% of our budget has been spent and encumbered to date. I respectfully request that you approve the financial statements as of February 29, 2020.
You've heard the recommendation of the Treasurer. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Delaney. Do we have a second? Mr. Schaaf, discussion. Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Financial statements as of March 31, 2020. For the month of March, we took in $13.2 million were the revenues. That's primarily in the general fund, total revenues in the general fund for That's primarily in the general fund. Total revenues in the general fund for March were nine million dollars. I do want to point out that during the month of March, so we received our property tax advance in January, we received one in February, and then in March, we received the balance of the state of the settlement. In the general fund, in our five-year forecast, we had projected an increase of about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars because we are at that twenty mil floor. And now that all of those revenues have been received, we came with just in a couple thousand dollars of that estimate. So so that's good. We're hitting where we should be on the forecast. During the month of March, our total state and federal grant revenues were one point two million. We usually draw those funds on a quarterly basis, and so this was our quarterly draw coming in. In terms of TIF revenues, we did receive in the month of March our spring TIF revenues from Union Township that amounted to five, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And that puts our TIF revenue so far for the year about forty thousand dollars higher than what was initially projected. Happy to report that there are five TIF districts that started to generate revenue for us that were new because of new, the construction is occurring or additional construction is occurring. So our TIF revenues are tracking a little bit higher than we had originally anticipated. On the expenditure side, total expenditures for all funds for the month of March were eleven point four million. That's primarily in our general fund. It was, the total expenditures in that fund were seven point four million. We spent one point six million on our OFCC elementary construction projects and four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was expended out of our state and federal grants. If we look at the second page, looking only at the general fund, total for the month of March was eight point nine, well, I'm sorry, almost nine million dollars, eight million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars were our total revenues in the month of March. So as I mentioned, our property taxes are all in and our homestead and rollback is is all in. The only thing that's still hanging out there is one manufactured home settlement. So you can see on the financial statement, we have brought in the majority of of our local revenues in terms of property tax and that related homestead and rollback. Our total revenues to date are sixty-eight point seven million dollars, showing that all revenues, when you compare it to what we budgeted, to what has been received to date, we've received eighty-nine percent of those revenues that we had budgeted. On the expenditure side, we spent seven point four million dollars in the general fund, bringing our total expenditures to date to sixty point six million, which is seventy-two percent of our budget. And we have encumbrances outstanding of three point nine million, leaving us with an unencumbered fund balance of eighteen point five million. Again, all the property taxes are all in except for that small manufactured home settlement. So what we'll start doing is expanding, spending down that that cash balance that you see there. Taking that to the final page in terms of our general fund expenditures by function, you can see total expenditures to date plus encumbrances shows that we have spent and encumbered seventy-seven percent of our total annual budget to date. So we're tracking along with the forecast. And we're doing well there. I respectfully request that you approve the financial statements as of March 31st, 2020 as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the Treasurer. I'll put that on the floor in the form of a motion and ask for a second. Mr. Rudy, discussion. Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved.
I did want to bring up, just update the group on a few things. Just as a reminder, House Bill 197 that was signed by the Governor at the end of March, it did include a provision in the bill which effectively freezes all Ed Choice schools so that no schools will be added in the 2020, 21 school year. So that's a good thing for West Claremont. We won't have any schools on the Ed Choice list for the 2020, 21 school year. The Ohio Department of Education is anticipating getting about four hundred and ninety million dollars of Federal Cares Act funding. I am on a call with with a lot of, with numerous Treasurers in Southwest Ohio this Thursday, and a representative from the Ohio Department of Education is to be on that call to see, to give a little bit more information about when exactly they think those funds will be distributed and any additional guidance with related to that. We're watching the state budget very closely. As you probably know, the state sales tax is lagging, and so we're watching very closely and we're hoping that the Ohio Department of Education will provide information pretty soon in terms of how that will affect our budget, whether it's going to affect our state budget for the remaining months this fiscal year and next fiscal year, or just what impact that will have. I do want to point out that for our child nutrition programs, you know, since the closure of our schools, our child nutrition program has done a wonderful job of distributing meals to our kids in our community, those that are eighteen and under. And we've served over fifty thousand meals. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of how those meals are being funded. We are currently operating under a program called the Seamless Summer Option. And we applied for a waiver and received that waiver from the USDA as well as the Ohio Department of Education that allowed under that program. So we are receiving reimbursement for every one of those meals that is being distributed to our community. And that is it for me.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Superintendent's Business. Mrs. Adams.
Dr. Foltz is on with us to give the personnel report.
All right. Good evening, members of the Board. Mrs. Adams, Mrs. Sininger. In front of you is the personnel agenda for April 20th, 2020. On the agenda today, we have a resignation of a special education supervisor, retirement of one of our health clinic assistants. We have five resignations of current teachers in the district, a resignation of a custodian and a part-time parapro aid. We also have proposed hiring of two cafe workers, and Mrs. Sininger talked about that a minute ago, is as we continue to feed our our children of our community, we need that support. And again, that's a zero, zero cost to us or a zero additional cost. You'll also see on the agendas, wrapping up the supplemental contracts for spring, so we'll take care of all those today. And we have two personnel on unpaid leave of absence. They're extending their FMLA. And we had school volunteers on the list, given the governor's new directive today, we may need volunteers at some point. So they had already gone through the process and got the background checks and got approval. So we went ahead and put them on here. And then finally, we have a stipend list for approvals for kindergarten, open house and registration, academic readiness night. We are going to have to reimagine as we go along throughout the spring to see what that's going to look like, but we're still going to have versions of support for our incoming kindergarteners. So I respectfully request that you approve the personnel agenda as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation from our HR Director. Sorry, the screen keeps jumping around. Our Assistant Superintendent, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schaaf, any discussion? Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mrs. Delaney.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
We're not trying to be confusing. We wanted to make sure that when the vote happens, your faces can be seen. Item 7.01, it's the first reading of the revised, replaced and new policy. So we are putting that out and will be voted on at the May 11th meeting. Any questions?
Did you guys hear me talking about 7.01?
Clearly.
Yes, I heard you.
True.
Okay. The bottom line is that these policies are available for display here over the next several weeks, and we will vote on those at the May 11th meeting.
Okay.
Very good.
At this time, we will move to item 7.03, the ballot issue work plan. And I'm getting a little echo for the first time all night when I speak, so I'm going to try to stay focused. First of all, it is certainly a surprise to all of us to have the election moved just days before. And when that original June date was set, we reached out to our legislators, asking them to influence an earlier election date and to help us with future planning, because it was going to be so difficult to be embedded later in June. And so we are very glad to know that the date was moved to earlier for April, because there's a lot of state and district. Our levy for learning website is available as it has been during this entire process. And it is available at www.westclaire.org. On that website, you will find information, our FAQs are there, our videos, any presentations that we've given or our notices to the to the newspaper. So we want to make sure that everyone is informed when they vote for the levy here in the next couple days. There is a new election date, that is April 28th. And what I want to just remind everybody is all the things that are at stake here in our school district. If we are unsuccessful at the March, or sorry, at the April 28th election, we will be reducing our budget by three point five million dollars. And what that money and what this vote would mean for our district is that we are able to preserve several things. Some of those include being able to preserve our transportation for both our elementary and our middle school students. Being able to keep programs and courses in place for the students that give us a good teacher to student ratio. It'll allow us to keep quality class sizes. It'll allow us to keep our music, art, physical education and technology programs in elementary, middle and high school intact. We will be able to preserve forty-six positions in our school district. Twenty-six of them are teaching positions, seventeen classified and three administrative positions. We'd be able to preserve our extracurricular programming and our gifted services. Additionally, we'll be able to preserve and protect programs that have been set up to support students with mental health issues and and other things related to student services as well as intervention enrichment programs. And I just think, I know that you've heard this all before, but it was just an important moment to just talk about this challenging economic time that we're in based on COVID-19, but the reality that we were talking about leading up to that and exactly what our district has at stake here in the next several days. You can vote by mail, and that is the only way that you can vote. And so the steps are listed here on the screen. You're going to request an absentee ballot. You can mail that or drop that off at the Claremont County Board of Elections with a ballot request form. Once you, they get your request form, they will mail out to you an actual ballot. And so then that will be your job then, once it comes in the mail, to complete that and return it to the Board of Elections. We have on our website these details and a flyer that can help you if you if you need some help or some more details there. It walks you through it point by point. To vote by mail, you want to adhere to these deadlines. We have April 25th at noon is the deadline to deliver the absentee ballot request form to the Board of Elections. April 27th is when the ballot issues must be postmarked. And the deadline to drop off voted ballots to the Board of Elections is April 28th at 7:30. And from what we understand, they will begin counting at that point, just like it would be a normal election night. And I want to take a moment here just to say thank you to our Board of Elections. They have been really slammed with this new reality and their ability to respond, they've they've been amazing. They've been so professional and so helpful, and we're just grateful for them because we we know it's been an extra strength for them during this time. Additionally, I want to just take a minute to thank all of the people that were helpful to us during this time of communicating with our with our stakeholders about the realities of our of our financial situation and our hope and plan for the future. So a special thank you tonight to Everything Bagel, to Dicky's Barbecue, the Amelia McDonald's, families who hosted the community chats in their homes, the PTOs who also hosted coffees within schools, the the bowling alley, I'm sorry, not the bowling alley, this is the skating rink, I said the wrong thing, Grater's Ice Cream, Brian Smith and his real estate agency, Coldwell Banker, and also the Coldwell Banker on Beauchamp Avenue. We had several staff members who hosted community chats. We had local pastors who attended our sessions as well as other real estate agents. The Chamber of Commerce allowed us to come and present in front of them with their board of, with their board. And the Claremont Sun has been great at publishing our op-eds and our information as we've asked them. And so we're just so thankful that our community has been given multiple opportunities to meet with us face to face. And lots of people have taken us up on that. They've communicated our resources that we've made available on our web. And it's just been a tremendous effort. There were over eighty presentations that were made in the span of time when we were working to engage with our community. And so it takes two to tango. And so we're just, we're so thankful that so many of you reached out and participated and and supported the sharing of the the facts with the community at this time. So thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions? Moving on, we'll go ahead and take a moment to just get an update on COVID-19 and the West Claremont School District's response to our mandated school closure. And I guess I would be remiss if I didn't start off with, as you all know, this afternoon, the governor has closed our schools for the remainder of the school year. So although we had been planning for a long-term move, this this definitely comes to us with sadness and mixed emotions about not being able to connect with our students because that that is what we're all about. That's why we're here. And it's very sad for us, even though we we're anticipating it to some degree. I would let you know that our response here at West Claremont has been one to to really try to work with the reality of here and now. We've tried to take the facts, share them as we know them to our stakeholders as quickly as possible. And our and our main effort has been to lead with clarity and to not lead with fear. And it's extremely challenging in such a time of unknowns when so many lives are in your hands. But that has been our our goal. And so there's, there's no doubt about it. Since March 12th, our world has been rocked when the governor decided to change, change the outcome for schools to to kind of shut us down so we could stop the spread. And as you know, there's been a couple changes along the way that has has progressed, which we're hearing good things. We're hearing that our our practices have made a difference. But we needed to be able to keep our students and our staff and our families safe, so it needs to continue longer than anticipated. Just to give you a quick update in terms of all the things that have been happening behind the scenes, our West Claremont School District Response Plan. Immediately, we implemented all the safety protocols from social distancing to special cleaning protocols, whatever it is that the state was recommending. We were, we were listening, we were engaged, and we were making every effort. Our number one focus has been child nutrition and making sure that our students are fed. That was like priority number one and and everything else kind of took a second seat. We're very grateful that our coordinator was able to to receive federal waivers to help support that financially. And it has been a well-oiled, very successful machine here over the last couple weeks. Additionally, we had to activate with the nurses and health clinic aides to make sure that all the medication that students take throughout the school day were redistributed back to the families. And so that was another Herculean effort. We had cleaning protocols that were followed by our custodial staff. And we had to work really hard right away to start assessing our technology plan for remote learning. And that is actually still underway. Sometimes it sounds really easy just to kind of check and see who needs a device and who doesn't. But there was a lot of, you know, some people maybe had devices, but they weren't up to actually focus on it and you follow through with all the features that were needed for some of the things that teachers were asking. And so we've continued to give devices. to give devices. Our teachers have been going fast and furiously through professional learning. A lot of things they knew leading into this crisis, obviously, but a lot of things really stretched them outside of their comfort zone, and so, we're just thankful for their time and their dedication. I'll pause here for a moment, just to say, when you're a district as lean as we are, turning a school district over from a face-to-face orientation to remote and digital overnight is quite a challenge, because we are, we have resources that get in the way for us to be as successful as fast as we want to be. We also have gaps in equity issues here, as well as gaps in our resources and our true abilities, and having staff that are even equipped to train other staff. I mean, it's just something that, we know we have economic challenges in our school district, that's pretty obvious to everybody, but it's just kind of amplified when you're in a crisis as we were, or as we are. We worked hard to partner with all the area superintendents, both in Claremont County, as well as in Hamilton County. Our Claremont County Health Department has been amazing and so responsive to us. As always, we've been working with Child Focus and Cincy Kids for Kids in just reach out to our community for both the social-emotional well-being, as well as the physical well-being of our students. And as we've said in many communications, our goal all this time has not been to just create a bunch of busy work for students to do. We wanted to make it as meaningful and as appropriate for the age and what was happening in the regular classroom as possible. And so, that's why we have done a boatload of communication. I think our communication director said there's just hundreds of thousands of emails that have gone out to all of our constituents over the last several weeks, because we've had daily communication about our staff, as well as our parents. And so, and that's something that being clear in our communication was very important to us. As you know, the school closure timeline, we found out the news March 12th, much like the rest of you did, by listening to the governor. And so, we immediately went right into preparing for remote learning options, making sure that we were following all this, the state laws. As you know, part of our challenge during this time is preparing individualized plans for over 1,000 students who have specialized learning plans, and so, lots and lots of details were put in place. And I have to say, committing to excellence with every learner, every day, and in every way, certainly has taken on, has taken on new meaning at this time. On March 30th, the school closure was extended by the governor, and so, at that time, we were preparing learning opportunities for our students and optional activities that they were able to engage in. And during spring break, we found out that the Centos Center at Xavier University was closing down all graduation ceremonies and all events in their venue, and so, we had to announce over spring break that a new updated graduation plan was in place. We were doing our best, knowing it was going to be devastating to our seniors and their families and to our staff. We did our very best to have a yes and plan. Yes, we have a date with Centos. The earliest that we were able to obtain from them was August 9th of 2020, and we have an opportunity, if the governor would happen to release restrictions that are on place for us now, that we would move that graduation to an on-campus graduation. So, we're fully ready to respond in that range of expectations, and it's our commitment to our families that we would at least give a month's notice, so that everyone can activate their family plans and be able to plan accordingly. It's terrible to think about what has been ripped away from all of our students, but especially our students, as there are so many special benchmark moments in the spring of a school year, and our heart just goes out to them. Next, April 14th, following spring break, we have launched into our full remote learning plan, and so, that means our teachers have been working hard all this time to connect and engage with our students. We've accounted for almost every single student in our school district, which we've gotten it down to just less than 1% of our students have not responded or reached back out to us. And so, we're very proud of that. It's, we're not satisfied with that, where that's definitely not good enough for us, but we're very happy at this stage of the game, because we know in some places, it's a lot bigger percentage. And so, we encourage anyone out there who's hearing us, if you know students or families that you're not sure if they've connected or not, to please have them reach out to their teacher or to their principal, so that we can account for them and support them during this time. And this slideshow, obviously, because we printed it or sent it live last week, is old now, because we've got the news today that the closure has extended to the remainder of the school year. So, I know this leaves many of you with lots of questions and things that can't be answered on this, in this very moment, but the things we do know, I will tell you, we will continue with our remote learning plan. We will continue feeding our students. We will continue being there for them socially, emotionally during this time, because we know that we provide the stability and the hope for the future that's so vital for our One of the things that we created during this time is called the Wolfpack Hub. It's linked off our website, www.westclaire.org, and it was meant to really try to streamline communication and let people know that there are resources here. Anytime anybody in our community sends us something to say, hey, here's a job opportunity, or here's another place where people can access food on the weekends or in the evenings, we list those links there. And so, I would just encourage all of you to take a look at that. We try to streamline and simplify, because we know during this time, it has been communication overload. And we have moved just recently from daily communication to parents from the district office, to we just communicate at the beginning of every week, and then the building principals communicate at the end of every week or on the weekends. And we're doing that again to try to simplify and make sure that you have the information at your fingertips, but that you're not overloaded. That's our goal. Also, we just want to really shout out and celebrate what's happened with our special education team and our curriculum team. The efforts that they've worked on behind the scenes with some of our teacher leaders and our staff has been incredible. They have whipped up at least three websites that are available for staff and students and parents during this time. The West Claremont Learning, optional learning opportunities were worked out so that we could have consistency in our elementaries across the board. A virtual bookmobile was created, and I just want to emphasize that we worked really hard to make sure that our planning was all about students, that teachers were equipped and comfortable to lean into this work and to try some new things, that we had a long-term sustainability plan, so we weren't making changes along the way, that we kept equity in the forefront, knowing that not every family has a device, not every family has internet connection, not everybody has parents at home that are equipped to help support. And so, we wanted to make sure that we put every opportunity in place for students. And so, a lot of that is still ongoing, in fact. We're still learning from our families who don't have internet access, and we are working on solutions for them. And we wanted, of course, to do all this with excellence, and I couldn't be more proud of the resources and the websites that the teams have developed for families, to make this very challenging situation as supported and as helpful as possible. And one thing I will celebrate is that the virtual bookmobile is going to be celebrated and shared on a national website and communication through our collaborative classroom, because it was noted. And so, I just want to, again, congratulate and thank all the people who have gone above and beyond to try to put tools in people's hands and support them along the way. Our partnerships in West Claremont are always incredible, and I have to say, this time has been no exception. So, you can see just on this one slide, all the people who have reached out to support us during this time, and I'm sure that we are leaving some people out, but I just can't thank the West Claremont community for not only caring about our kids academically and helping us get academic supports up and running, but to knowing first and foremost that people need to be fed, that basic human needs need to be met, and those social-emotional concerns need to be addressed. And so, literally, everybody on that website has understood the need to address the whole child, and so, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We know we couldn't do this without you, and we know that we're better together, so thank you. To hit some highlights, some unbelievable statistics I think are important to highlight. There's been over 50,000 meals served to students who are 18 and under since we started feeding in March. We had 1,250, more than 1,250 Chromebooks have been shared with our families and with our students, so that they can access the remote learning. And I want to point out that this is in addition to the devices that have already been established for grade six through 10. And so, it's just been an incredible effort on our technology team, as well as we've recruited other people, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, to try to track down students, provide safe dropout and pickup opportunities, and to have a tech helpline, pretty much, not quite 24/7, but as available as possible, to make sure that we are supporting people. Over 800 hours have been clocked by our staff in professional development, as they've worked really hard to roll up their sleeves, learn some new things, and try some new learning experiences with their students. They've been incredible. And well over 8,500 calls, text messages, visits have been made to our students. We are trying to go above and beyond to reach out to everyone, not only to make sure they're okay in terms of an attendance check, but just to support them and help them know that we see them, we hear them, and they're valued, and that we support them during this challenging There's been a few changes to the legislation in House Bill 197, and it's had an impact on our school system, and I just want to call to your attention. I won't go into great detail about them, but know that the governor has been using quality advisors across the state, superintendents, as well as ODE, legal support to help make the decisions. And so, first, the Open Meetings Act has allowed us to have a session like this, which I'm grateful. We are able to use online remote learning to count for educational hours, so that it can count for the 2019-20 school year, so there aren't makeup days in the summer and beyond. Telehealth is available for our students who have more medical needs or kind of therapy needs that need to be delivered to support their learning. They have suspended the overall letter grade and report card system that we all know and very well here in West Claremont and across the state of Ohio. That's going out the door for this year to alleviate the pressure, because people know that throughout Ohio, there's such equity issues that we could never have a legitimate system in a remote way. We knew that we were called to do our very best effort, and that's what we've been doing, but know that we cannot replace face-to-face education that we are able to offer in our schools. There's a modified grading system capabilities, and we are certainly taking advantage of that in terms of being very flexible with students, making sure that we were giving lots of grace, and that we are supporting them along the way, knowing that in homes, there are people using multiple devices, that the flexibility needed for working parents to be able to do their jobs, as well as support their students in learning, and not overload the internet capabilities in their homes, being able to work flexible hours for families who may be working all night and then, you know, needing to rest during the day. I mean, there's just so many versions of how flexible, or how many versions of situations there are, and so, we've been trying to be as flexible with these policies to respond to those. The graduation requirements have changed, in that they're allowing us to take the minimum state requirements. And so, just to give you a few little updates on this, because that's part of what you're going to vote on here in a little bit, is a resolution to accept this modified curriculum. We are able, through this new opportunity, we used to have 21 credits required, the state minimum is 20, and so, that's allowed us to be able to promote 42 more students. In total, the class size of 2020 is 591, and we're tracking along with students the best way possible. Seniors who have met all of their credit requirements will graduate with a class of 2020, and they need to complete these 20 hours of graduation instead of the previous 21. Students who have not yet met the state requirements of the 18-point, and of course, exam requirements or the alternative pathways, I don't have to worry about that anymore. They will be considered to have met the requirements if they were on track, starting in March 2020, and that they're doing the things with the remote learning that they're expected to do. And so, that opens up some opportunity for our students that we're very grateful for. Now, with that, it doesn't say there's a free pass for every senior, that's not what I'm saying here. There are plenty of students who weren't on track before, who have to work their tails off to get back into a good place, so that they can graduate, because we have several students who are at risk, but we were, through the state legislation, able to help at least 42 students. And unfortunately, there are going to be some students who are still not going to make it, because they haven't been doing the things that they've needed to all along, but everybody who's putting a good, quality, good faith effort forward and was meeting the requirements before the closure are going to be good for graduation from a technical standpoint. And finally, we have an updated evaluation requirement that has given us a little flexibility. We're still working through the details with that on our teachers, but those are the things that House Bill 197 has put into place, and we've had some flexibilities, a district to have some time to respond to. I want to take a minute just to celebrate what's been happening in our district, and so, I hope that many, many of you are getting on our social media to see that we have the Easter Bunny giving math lessons that are engaging to our students, that we have teachers who are capitalizing on the books that they were already reading in their classes. They were having students take the characters that they were learning about and put them in the modern-day situation of COVID-19 that we're in, to see how would those characters respond. And so, the students are able to kind of wrestle with their own feelings and do some critical thinking and creatively use their minds to process during this time. We had, as part of a Google Hangout, which has become our way of life around here, there was an opportunity in several of our schools for parents to get on and get some help with remote learning and to get some support. So, we just thank all the teachers for the above and beyond extra miles that they've been going, and the parents, your above and beyond extra miles that you've gone to help your students. And finally, I just want to point out that our Love WC is, still has some legs, it still continues to be a bright light across our district. And so, we challenged everyone to decorate, whether they did our coloring sheet and posted in their homes, or decorated a sidewalk, or whatever. We've got a huge response during spring break of the Love WC. And what I love about this window is here, is that, yes, school can be canceled, but they can't cancel hope. And I think it's just been another, like, bright light for everybody to look to and to know that we're all in this together. Finally, I want to include in here a quote from one of our parents. "I just want to say thank you for the open communication and thoughtful action of the district leadership and teachers. My son is in third grade, and his teachers have been communicating with us every step of the way, and the plan looks promising. I'm also a single mom, and I don't have family here in Cincinnati. My friends in this district have been so supportive. I'm truly thankful to be in West Claremont. We have to stick together." And I don't share that to toot our own horn necessarily, I share it to say that we are listening, and we are trying to work as partners with our families and our community and our staff and our students. And so, every day, we look at our info@westclaire.org emails, and we get back to people and we respond. So, if you have questions, if you have comments, or if you have needs in your family, please don't hesitate to reach out. And thank you for all those parents who are sending notes like this of encouragement to us, or posting on social media, because it certainly is a boost to us. It helps us get affirmation, and it helps us know that we're making the connections that we need to, you know? And also, hard feedback is helpful for us, because we can always learn. We don't, we're not trying to promote that we are perfect and all this, and we have it all figured out. We're all learners in this together. And so, with that said, later this week, we will be sending out additional feedback opportunities, because we want to hear the voice of our students, of our parents and of our staff, to say, okay, now that we're into it this deep, what are some more recommendations that you have for us? What's going well, what could be improved? Because we are definitely a school district of continuous improvement. And as we promised, the Health Department and all of the partners that we work with, we wanted to end this communication with a public service announcement, to remember to protect yourself from preventing the spread of disease. The best way that we can take care of ourselves is washing our hands, social distancing, and making sure that we're following all the requirements that are set out to us throughout our governor, throughout our state, throughout the world. It's just so important, and we have to work on this together, so that we can get back together eventually. So, board, at this point, I'll just mention again, the resolution that you're going to vote on at this time is all about the curriculum, being able to change the requirements from 21 requirements to 20, which is the state minimum, that will allow more of our graduates to overcome the requirements and be able to be successful and graduate with a class of 2020 on time. Do you have questions before we go to that vote?
I have a question, Mrs. Adams. You said that there are still students at risk with this time that we have till the perceived end of the school year. Will there still be additional students that will be able to achieve that and be added? be additional students that will be able to achieve that and be added to the class?
Natasha, you're muted.
So sorry, I thought I had it still on. There is absolutely time to engage with teachers and to keep working. This is a humongous opportunity, that's very flexible, that we hope that every single senior takes advantage of, and ends up with a diploma at the end of this. So absolutely, there are chances. And our teachers, and our counselors, and our principals will be, whether it's physically knocking on their door, or cyberspace knocking on their door, they will be on them every day. Any other questions?
You've heard the recommendation given to us by Superintendent Adams. Do we have a motion?
Tell me.
Dave Schaaf is first, and Mr. Rudy, second. Any further discussion, we need? Hearing done. Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Motion approved.
As part of my superintendent comments, I just have a few updates. Again, I can't thank our staff enough for the Herculean efforts that they have had to spin up practically overnight, as well as our parents and our students for their grace, their compassion, and their flexibility. It just means the world to us, and I think overall, it's going extremely well. We are really trying to work on not being day-to-day kind of focused people, but to be long-term, and to be doing the things that are essential. Our principals are leaders who usually lead with their feet. They're able to manage and be a part of a school system, and really see everything that's going on. And so this has added an extra challenge to how they're able to reach and connect with people, and I just couldn't be more proud of their efforts, both the principals, as well as the assistant principals, to stay a part of teachers' daily lives and students' lives as much as possible. Many of them jump in on the Google Hangouts, just to say hello to children, and to keep motivating them and celebrating their efforts. And so we're just thankful for our administrators in the school district. This week is Spirit Week. As you can tell, this is your favorite sports team today, so we're all in our West Claremont gear. Tomorrow is dressing up as your favorite hero. And so we're talking about any kind of hero, but especially modern-day heroes today. So we're expecting to see some Dr. Amy Acton look-alikes, maybe some doctors and other nurses, as well as our frontline people that are just making a difference behind the scenes for us in this truly challenging pandemic time. We're asking that families send us and tag us on social media for what does remote learning behind the scenes look like, and what are some stories out there of happiness that we can spread, some things that really just show the kindness that exists in our community, the joy, and the positive that have come out of the pandemic during this time. And finally, I just want to say, community, we have a lot at stake here on April 28th. And so anything that we can do to encourage you to vote is vitally important to us right now. Our district has been experiencing an amazing amount of positive momentum. Really good things are happening here, and even through the pandemic, really good things are happening, even though it's challenging. We feel like we're working with two hands tied behind our back most days. It's just a critical time that West Claremont come out and vote, and so I just want to encourage you. And with that, that's all my comments.
Thank you. Moving on to board business, in the spirit of keeping it brief, please keep it brief. Mr. Schaaf, would you like to start?
I would like to thank Mrs. Adams, Mrs. Sininger, and everyone in the district for their flexibility, especially with the students and the parents and everyone. I'd really like to congratulate our Nutrition Department, and just the fact that we've been able to get so many meals put together and get out each week. But other than that, hopefully, everybody has an opportunity to vote and understands the process of getting a ballot application, and then having to turn that in to get a ballot, and then having to turn that in. And hopefully, if there are any questions, people can go to our website and get some assistance. So that's all I have. Everybody stay safe and healthy.
Mr. Chumley? You're so dark. It's in the picture there.
We're all in a bit of a rocky boat here over the last month or so, but I just want to thank everyone for working hard, getting through this together. It seems like, especially here at West Claremont, we have adversity after adversity. When we're through one hill, there's another one on the horizon. So I think we've done an incredible job. And I just want to thank everyone involved, showing the numbers today of the food and supplies and time we've put in. It's incredible. So I personally like to say thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Delaney?
This is a time that we're all having to just take a deep breath, slow down, and take care of ourselves. I kind of think this is just something that we all have been moving too fast, and we just need to remember that, that at the end of the day, slow and steady is going to win this race, and this is what we've done as a district. And I'm so very thankful for our parents, our students, and our community for giving our administrators and our cabinet team that time to figure out what's best for our students, and make sure that we are successful. Because at the end of the day, we want our students to be successful. Class of 2020 seniors, I know this is tough, but think of it this way. This is kind of an earlier life lesson for you, before you go off to college, or to the military, or to adulting. And you're just getting it a few months earlier, and I know it really stinks, because you're not doing all the cool, fun things that you get to do, but we love you, and we're lifting you up. And if anybody is interested, some of the seniors have bonded together and started a Facebook page to adopt a senior. It's West Claremont Adopt a Senior Facebook, if you're interested in adopting a senior to show some love and support during this, to make their senior year as best as it can be through the worst of times. So stay safe, and we're going to get through this.
Thank you. Mr. Rudy?
I'd like to put in a plug for the Adopt a Senior program also. I'm very excited about it. I've already picked four, and hopefully, I'm going to get some more. I would like to see every senior be adopted by somebody, just a little something to make their lack of activity better. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple of things. One, I'd like to thank everyone in our community that supports our Wolf Pack Pantry, specifically the Crossroads East Side Church this past weekend, who did a huge food drive, and my husband helped load the stuff up and take it over to the middle school and get it positioned and everything. We have a lot of great donors, very generous donors, that's helping keeping our families and our community fed. We thank you very, very much for that. And Mrs. Adams, you mentioned tomorrow is being superheroes, and I just want to give a plug out to one of our teachers. My son is a student at the high school, and he has a chemistry teacher that is going, in my opinion, far and above, beyond what we could imagine. So tomorrow, I plan to dress as a chemist, to honor him and thank him for everything he's doing. Chemistry is not a subject that teenagers are particularly fond of, and he has found a way to engage the students in ways that we could only imagine, including Sunday nights at 9:00, doing his last session of help assistance before homework is due at midnight. And for any of our teachers to make himself available for 9:00 on Sunday evening, knowing that we have procrastinators amongst us, and our students do their best learning in the evenings versus the daytime. He's done an exceptional, good job. So thank you for that. I'm sure it's happening across the district, but being a parent, I'm seeing it live and firsthand. So with that, I think our regular session of our business meeting has come to a close. However, we did not finish our business that we needed to finish in an executive session. So we're going to go back in executive session. I'm going to make a motion to move into an executive session, again, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Rudy? We're going to go ahead and take roll call. Mrs. Sininger?
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
We're going to go ahead and move into an executive session, and we will be coming back out of executive session, so that we can adjourn the meeting. However, we will not be making any decisions. There'll be no voting. There will be nothing more than adjournment. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
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 Okay. Are we live again? Okay. Thank you. We're back from executive session. Mrs. Sininger, could you please call, roll call to bring us out of executive?
Kelly, you're muted.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Present.
Mr. Rudy?
Present.
Mr. Schaaf?
Present.
Mrs. Delaney?
Present.
Mr. Chumley?
Present.
Motion approved. Having no further business this evening, can we call for adjournment?
So moved.
Mr. Schaaf first, Mr. Rudy second. Roll call?
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Delaney?
Yes.
Motion approved. We appreciate and thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Our next board meeting is on May the 11th. Thank you again, and good night.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.